I'm gonna turn it, turn it over to Councilman Randall with the, I guess he has a guest. Or an opening prayer.
I like to thank everybody for coming to Eagle Nest and sharing your day with us. I wish everybody a good trip home after the meeting and I'll be cordial and honorable to each other today. Hope we talk. I would say it's an easy conversation. We should teach us who you are. I'd like to thank everybody for coming to Eagle Nest and sharing your day with us. I wish everybody a good trip home after the meeting and I'll be cordial and honorable to each other today. Hope we talk.
Well, thank you, Councilman Randall, for them words of encouragement. Secretary Roque.
Would like to say good morning to all the council reps, the Oyate, any executive board members present, attorneys and staff. Julian Spotted Bear.
Present.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Here.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yo.
George Dreamer Jr.
Present.
Tyler Londonman.
Ho, wah, hilo.
Jackie Sears.
Here.
Garfield Still. James Cross.
Present.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Here.
Jeremy Rosales.
Here.
Dave Kelly.
Present.
Troy Little is excused. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Here.
Laya Weston is excused. Donora Ghost Bear. Richard Greenwall Senior.
Here.
Anna Halverson. B. Frandl.
Here.
Craig Dillon.
Here.
Three.
Sixteen present, three absent, two excused. We establish corn. So we left off Agenda Item Number Nine. Any suggestions on what if we wanted to address the next issue?
Chair, what was the issue?
Um, I believe the, the talk was on Mr. Montgomery.
Uh, I'm gonna motion a table because the family is not here to speak against it.
I'll second that, Chair.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Little White Man and seconded by Councilman Londonman. Secretary call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Ye- yes, I guess.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Bl- Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
I just have a quick question. How do we table something that's not on the agenda?
I think it was under Number Nine. Banishment.
What I'm saying though, it wasn't on that list.
Okay, moving on to our next Agenda Item is the Secretary's Office.
Under the Secretary's Office, we have tribal council minutes for September sixteenth twenty-four and thirty twenty-two-five. Requesting motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, seconded by Councilman Rosales. Councilman Greenwall. Roll call.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
David Poyer. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.
Yes.
Sixteen unanimous motion carried.
Next is the Executive Committee Minutes for September third, ten, seventeen and twenty-five twenty-two-five. Requesting motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Dillon, seconded by Councilman Standing Soldier. Offered vote.
Yet.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
David Kelly.
No.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Not voting.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh, huh.
James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one no, one not voting, motion carried.
That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Secretary. Moving on to the next Agenda Item, Comptrollers Report.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
For those out there that aren't here, my name is Tony Montlow and I was put in as the OST Comptroller effective October first. So this has been about three weeks. I wasn't sure if there was a format that you wanted me to follow in giving my report. So I just decided I would go ahead and, and just tell you what a day is like. So first thing I do in the day is, is visit with staff, say good morning, see what needs to be done, hear any concerns that they might have. A lot of the time is spent on vouchers and requisitions, seeing what's needed. The other thing that is real high on the list is audits and the ARPA reporting. So if you take a look at your, my report that I passed out, first, the first page is something that I've been doing since the third quarter of twenty-twenty-two. And that's the ARPA reporting, but this started this year in twenty-twenty-five. This report, it says, ending the second quarter. That was the balance for each of those buildings and each of those buildings was allocated six point two million. Third quarter expenditures and that's the total that each district has been spent on their building. Did we have any questions on that?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
And while Steve is here, and I know Steve's been on this, first of all, good morning to our visiting audience and also the ones on Zoom this morning in our council this morning, Executive Board. But what I wanted to ask, Tony, I know you showed us this report this morning. I think Steve, I know we gave each of the nine districts six point two million for the, for each of the multipurpose buildings. And I'm just looking at Wakpamne's, but she has an ending second quarter, an amount there, and then for a third quarter. So far that we have spent on the Wakpamne District's multipurpose building. And so it looks like we spent about a million nine hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred eight point forty-six so far on our multipurpose building. And I think we're gonna probably, and we did let her know this morning, part of it is going to be, remember, I think we allocated tariff fees into these buildings. And I think we did this about back in, I think Killer's Administration, yeah, Killer's Administration when we did that. So could you give us maybe an update on that part of it, the six point two plus what we gave as tariff? She didn't know about that. She said she did not know that, that we did that, but the treasurer does know about it because she was on council with us during that time. Was it during Killer's Administration? Little one. Just trying to refresh.
That, that's not how it worked, remember? There were several districts who wanted to waive the tariff fees. So and then there were several executive boards who came in and said, we need the money in the district. So instead of putting the tariff fees back into the projects, the, the action was to not waive the tariff fees. So everyone can get their allocation from the tariff fees, not back into the buildings. That one never went through. If it did, I, I think we need to see the action.
Yeah, we need to see the action, Steve. Because last administration, the owner's rep came to us to waive our tariff fee. But we, Wakpamne did not waive their tariff fee. The two other districts that were under his owner's rep, they waived their tariff fee. So that was White Clay District and Pine Ridge Village, but Wakpamne didn't waive theirs. So that is why we're making sure these are right. Miss Montlow was giving us an update on it. So we just needed to make sure that we understood what the report here. With our, I'm, I'm questioning just our district for now.
So in the beginning, six million was allocated per building. There are nine districts, so the total was fifty-four million. There was a council action to add an additional amount to the budget, which I think raised the allocation to for each district above six million. If you just give me one moment, please. I think a total of two million one hundred and sixty thousand was added, and I, I think that that worked out if we divide that by nine.
Two point what? Sixty? Two point six.
Two point one six. But I can get those numbers for you. So, so originally it was fifty-four million. It, it increased to about fifty-six, and again, I can get you the exact numbers. However, certain districts did want to ask the council for a waiver of tariff fees and some waivers were approved by the tribal council, but not for every district. So that's the current situation. These, the Comptrollers Report is a, is, appears to be a report of expenditures to date. And it does look like for Wakpamne, a total of about two million has been expended. So that, that does mean that, you know, it looks like four, four point two million, it, it remains in their budget. Some districts have spent more. It does look like Eagle Nest has expended four point eight approximately. So they, you know, perhaps they're further along. So this is, this is the Comptrollers Report of expenditures. But like I said, the council did approve waivers of tariff fees at the request of certain districts, but not for all nine districts. It was a district by district approach.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Thank you. And in regards to the tariff fees, it's interesting to hear that the tariff fees did not go back into the contracts. Originally, during the, during the time that we preserved these funds for these multipurpose facilities, we motioned to hold fifty-four million of the original ARPA funds that would have left six million per district. So the two hundred thousand additionally came at a later time. And looking for at Pine Ridge District specifically, I know last administration, I was, I was not a part of that administration. However, the tariff fees were waived for that district. And I know, I believe we were requesting an audit on our, on our spending expenditures specifically for our district. Because with the tariff fees being waived and if the tariff fees were put into the district separate from the building, I'd like to see those minutes specifically where it went back to the districts versus into the building. Because the idea of, of where the location of our building was placed, there was infrastructure there already. So that would have been another cost savings for us. And so that would have been additional funds towards the building. As to, I do the math, I believe there was one point five set aside for admin fees as well. So when I, when I look at that, that relieves us a remaining of two million seven hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars fifty-nine cents for the remainder of the building to be built in, in our district alone. So I would, I would like to motion to see our, where those tariff fees went for our district. And this is why I encourage all the districts not to waive tariff fees in your districts because of what we're dealing with in our district. Aside from that, but I, I know that originally when, when Councilman Dreamer made the motion and that was something we discussed when we first received those ARPA building, uh, ARPA funding, that was something that was a big need across our, across our reservation is that we don't have enough facilities. So we preserved that, so a good chunk of that funding so that we could build, so we would have office space, a large holding areas in case of emergencies. But I would like to see the breakdown of where that tariff fee, where those tariff fees went. Because they, my understanding was the additional fees would have went to that facility. Thank you.
Councilman Londonman.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. I was just gonna add to what Steve was talking about. So if you look at Ordinance twenty-two twenty-six, it was waiving the tariff fees of the multipurpose buildings. And then there's Ordinance twenty-two thirty-seven that rescinds that twenty-two twenty-six. And then after that, there was action where there's, there was a few districts that, that waived their tariff fees. And that's where we're at currently. And I know pertaining to my district in Porcupine, me and Dave, that is the reason why it's later on in the agenda under EB and D, but it's the reason why we're requesting ours to be waived as well. So it's only fair, I mean, to save this conversation for later, but it's only fair. I think that if you waive them for one, you gotta waive them for all. So, thank you.
So just to follow up on that, that, that's correct. And I was able to pull up the numbers. Originally fifty-four million was budgeted, so again, six million per building. By, by Ordinance twenty-three. There was an increase for each building of a hundred and eighty thousand for a total reservation wide increase of one point six two million. So I, I did misspeak earlier. So the total budget for the, for all nine buildings would be fifty-five million six hundred and twenty thousand. And that, that increase was to put money into each district that would allow them to pay the tariff fees. Having said that, some of the districts did come back to council and say, can we take that hundred and eighty and put that back into the building through, through a tariff waiver? And the council for some, the districts, again, on a case by case basis, said yes. And that was by ordinance. So there are ordinances waiving a tariff fee for certain districts. Some districts, like Wakpamne, did not want to do that. For the, for the districts that did waive, like Pine Ridge, that money was put back into the building. And I would encourage every, everyone on the council to, to talk with their owner's representatives for those projects because they can, they can show you those budgeted figures where if there was a waiver for, of the fees for a district, that money went right back into the budget for that building. It did not go somewhere else or to some other project. Thank you.
Council, Councilman Kelly.
Steve, I was gonna ask, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it was Pine Ridge District and what were the other two, other districts that were?
Ogallala.
I, I do know Pine Ridge and Ogallala and I'll check my notes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You know, last week I had made a motion, a recommendation, looking for everything, dealing with the Wounded Knee District building. Our multipurpose building has not seen any movement in well over a year. And we haven't seen the owner's rep in shit, three years. So, so I brought that up. I invited the owner's rep down to a district meeting and they were here probably about a week ago. But from my understanding, they, they don't have all the numbers either because I was asking for everything from the concept to current on what was spent. And so hence my recommendation, my motion last week in Finance Committee was for the Wounded Knee District, but then it, it, it seems like every other district is having the same issues by not being allowed to see any of the finances that happen on this, these projects. So, Ms. Montlow, we do have a motion that's floating out here, coming from Finance. And what, what my recommendation was, was to see the general ledger. Not specifically the remaining expenditure report. You know, I'm glad you provided it, but I want to see every single dollar that will bend on our multipurpose building. Because I'm also being told, you know, we're running into the tariff issue. And for, for years I've had to deal with, with tariff on, on special construction projects. And, you know, they're, in, in this case, they're for the benefit of each district. And if you waive your fee and if that contractor, you know, is out of compliance, tariff is not there to represent you. You just gave up your right. So I need to know if Wounded Knee, and I don't know for a fact if we gave up our tariff or waived our, our right to tariff, but I'm hoping that at some point, our tariff funding still remains. Because if something were to happen during the construction, I would have, I would have some issues with that. So, so Ms. Montlow, I do know your predecessor should have a book upstairs for each individual project. And I need to know how our money was being spent because at the initial meetings, we met up in Rapid City and I've asked some questions in the very beginning, just generalized questions about these buildings. And, and they didn't have a, a set of plans, a complete set of plans for me to review. Whether it be the electrical, the propane, the ASAP system. They didn't have any of that. These were all design build projects, which I don't agree with. Right here, Jeff, let me sit on right there. But yeah, somewhere along the line, you know, I just want us all to be on the same page. I need to know where our money's at. I need to know what, what was spent because, you know, each one of us had our own separate design. And just from a construction appearance, one design would have benefited everybody. We, that would have been a major cost savings, but in this case it wasn't. So, Ms. Montlow, you know, I'm gonna ask on council here that we get to see everything that has been expended in a general ledger report, whether it's pay, invoiced or payment. But, you know, my district is having a lot of questions and, and I just don't have a, a good valid answer for them. The last meeting we had is our building was, our bolts that were put into the concrete were all off. Hence, our structure would not be able to be put up until that was fixed. So apparently, and I'm being told that we didn't waive our, our tariff rights. So tariff can now step in and make these guys come into compliance because I shouldn't have to, or we, the district, shouldn't have to eat that cost. That falls on the contractor. They bid this project. When they bid it, they bid it for this amount. They said they could do everything for this amount. So anything above and beyond, that is their responsibility, not the district's. Thank you.
Councilman Jumping Eagle.
You know, just real quick, I did, I remember sitting by Garfield whenever the Wounded Knee District, they did waive their tariff fees for that building. Because I remember we were arguing, yeah, we was arguing. I said, well, if you guys waive them fees, then
Because I remember we were arguing, yeah, we was arguing. I said, well, if you guys waive them fees, then um, you know, they, whatever money comes back to the districts, are them districts still um, eligible to receive because they waived, right? Because portion of tariff goes to the districts. And then I did ask Marguerite, Dave, he said she came down last week for a meeting at the district and I'd asked her if the reps were there. She said no. She said none of you or Garfield weren't there at the district meeting. So that, I mean, them, them are good meetings to attend. I mean, she came to our district also, so. I don't know, she probably went to Porcupine too, right, Ty? Yeah. But I mean, I just wanted to, I asked Garfield, he said you guys did waive the fee.
If I can respond, Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm uh, I'm actually the one that set the meeting. But please realize that the school board in Wounded Knee District School itself is also construction, constructing a new facility. So I set the meeting on behalf of the people there that had questions. And I attended the other meeting because that's a, a hundred million dollar school construction, so I can't be in two places at once just for your information.
Councilman Poyer.
This lady's interrupting me? No, I just said, you know, I think all we're here is for Ms. Montalow's report. This other stuff can be worked out in a committee. Although I think where she got her numbers is probably what has been paid out. The tariff fee is paid to the contractor and the contractor has to pay that out, so she's not gonna have a record of that, but can we just talk about the report? Because the tariff, that's a different subject here. I mean, I know, I know it's probably in these budgets, but you know, so let, let's stick to the, the budget, with the information that she gave us.
Uh, the, oh, Councilman Poyer, uh, we need to get this cleared up here, this, this tariff fees deal, so I, I have Mr. Jeff Whalen, who, who is um, what, the Chair of, of our Tarot Commission. And he did go down to that training. Uh, I believe this is the second time in that training. And we're, I think we were misled on, on some of this information. And so I'm gonna turn the mic over to him and let him explain a few things. So we can move on.
Okay, first of all, I, I partially agree with Davey that um, we, we were going to, on the agenda, there's, there's an issue where one of the districts wants to waive the tariff fee, so I was prepared to wait for that time. And not during uh, Ms. Montalow's period here, so. I, I could, I could uh, do this now or later, whichever, whichever would be, whichever would work.
Okay, well, we can wait till later then. Go ahead, Ms. Montalow. Continue.
I didn't know they had a banana over there.
Chair, Chair. We could go through her report, but if we want to just handle this right now, since it's pretty much here, we can.
Let's wait till you're on your.
You guys wanna wait? Okay, alright.
Okay, I apologize, but this, these numbers I got are actually from the ARPA reporting. I run a general ledger for each, each district. Those are actual figures of what was spent. Okay, on the next page is actually some very good information that Mr. Gunn shared with me. And it's connected to the page following the executive fees. My understanding of executive fees is there are leases that the BIA does with people who lease our range units. Anything to do with range units. This executive fees is now called administrative fees. Prior to this twenty-three, when this law was changed to what Mr. Gunn provided here, the BIA would collect three percent, but not to exceed five hundred dollars on each lease. We never did get an accounting from BIA that would say, hey, you made two million in leases and, and we could determine whether we went at five hundred per lease or three percent, and that's revenue for the tribe. Well, somehow since twenty nineteen, we didn't get any reimbursement for our executive execution fee office. And we do have a couple positions in the land office that go out and they're land range technicians. You know, it's not for me to um, judge because each of us are raised differently. Each of us have parents, grandparents, foster parents, whoever raised us. And so sometimes I know my actions are from how my family believes. So, my grandma would chew me out if I talked down to somebody or if I didn't listen and had a answer. And when we work with BIA, I expect that same type of respect because I give it. And it's a professional thing. I visited with um, the superintendent, Ms. Gina Duval. And she told me that this money was discretionary and they could spend it any way they want it. And, and I know in twenty nineteen, it was we would just send over the general ledger and check registers of anything that we paid for their board, for their mileage. And so earlier today, Monday, I asked if she was coming here because I, I wanted to, you know, visit with her on this one more time. And her response to me, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it. Because really took me back. I was not expecting this. I say on Monday at one forty-two, will you or Tina be at the council meeting tomorrow? And she responds, how may I be of assistance? So I say, no, just a question, wondering if there was gonna be a BIA update or um, on the number of four twenty-fives outstanding. And her response to me was, maybe start with your own internal process for tracking the number of outstanding reports. Do you have an internal process? And I thought, well, we've even being late in our audits, we've never been horrible. We, we, twenty nineteen, everything, we didn't have findings. And, and um, she could have sat down with me and said, hey, this law was changed. It no longer goes back to the tribe. The BI keeps it. This changed in twenty twenty-three. This, this council has actually assigned Jennifer Hughes to work on this. And that would be from nineteen to twenty-three, to when this law changed. So I don't know, I just expect more of people that should be working for the tribe rather than a snotty answer, but that's my opinion.
Councilman Poyer.
You know, if you look at the page that has the outstanding execution fees. In, in nineteen, they only paid fifty-one thousand, nine ninety-nine. Might as well say fifty-two thousand, then it goes on. But there, they collect on behalf of the tribe. There's, there used to be two uh, employees that were employed, paid under execution fees. And one is still there, one, one position is vacant. But, and then the board, the allocation committee board, their stipends, mileage comes out of there. But the thing is, they should have been paying that, what Tony said, that three percent of the bill or up to five hundred dollars. That wasn't paid. There's also another fee that's charged that goes through Realty, they call it leasing. That's just a one-time fee that's assessed when the contract starts up for the five years. That's supposed to, that used to be a tribal employee over there, but that's been vacant for years. So I don't know what they're doing with that money. The thing is, they keep telling us and we keep telling them that they owe the tribe. And the, the, those that have those leases are paying it. And the Bureau's not giving it up. So I don't know when they change this law. Where they can use it as, as a discretionary fund because in the, in the CFR, what I remember when there, I don't pack around one of those government bibles, right? But the, those fees belong to the tribe. They don't belong to, to the BIA to use as a discretionary fund. So I, I, I don't know who we need to talk to on this. Because when uh, the law, the previous superintendent was here, we used to get these all the time, it was like clockwork. So do we talk to the area director? Do we talk to Washington? Who do we talk to? And that's why I think the land committee had Jennifer Hughes working on this to see where we're at. It's probably, that bill's gonna probably run up more than what we're owed.
Right.
But there's gotta be a simple way to get this money, because it's been paid in already. It's paid in on everybody that has a range unit. So, I, I don't, I don't know, it's beyond me, but that's all I had to say on that. Thank you.
We can ask those questions. We'll put that on our list. Go ahead, Councilman Seers.
Yeah, I think um, Ms. Montalow, you did mention something about the four twenty-fives and you read off what Ms. DeVeau had responded to. But you gotta remember, they are on furlough right now. They're um, they're not able to go in and, and um, do or make decisions at this point because they're not actively working. But I also um, wanted to say that the, you guys are requesting that they give you a balance or, or where they're at with the four twenty-fives? Is that what you were asking? How, how, how far?
Oh, I didn't get through yet.
I mean, I thought that was what, what their question was.
Can you use your mic? Thank you.
The text that I read was just a conversation that I had, asking if she would be here for those two reasons, but I didn't know if we moved on from the executive fees.
I'll wait on that. I'll wait on that. Yeah. Go ahead.
Any more questions?
You can continue.
Okay, alright, so then the next thing on my agenda is our four twenty-fives. It's something that I've walked into and I know, I know the importance of these. And I, I really don't, I know we can't go back, we can't fix anything. But I'm not making headway either. And it's just like Monsieur said, they're on furlough. I'm not sure what their hours are. I asked that too, as you know, I, is there a specific time that you can come in? Because I, I had an accountant send over four twenty-fives for, I, I don't remember the year and I don't want to be misquoted. But they're not at work. So are we sitting here twiddling our thumbs or working on another program and waiting for somebody to approve those? And then I thought, well, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna ask the man who wrote the, the law, that six thirty-eight law. You know, Ben Nabumsa, he helped this tribe, he helped Dean Patton, Stacy Dewuff in like two thousand eight and nine. So, I sent him an email and gave, he responded with a call. And this isn't, we haven't paid him anything. But I want to read this letter for the record because I think it's really important that we move forward. We can't go backwards. We can't, we don't, we're unassured of when BIA is gonna be there. And looking at other funding agencies, they're accepting our four twenty-five. It's only BIA. So I'm gonna read this and bear with me. If anyone has questions, please do. Um, this is in response to concerns of our OST FAO accountants. Um, they raise these regarding our submission of federal financial reports, the SF four twenty-fives for all BIA awards. I want to clarify the basis for our reporting and address any perceived discrepancies. We prepare our SF four twenty-fives using information derived directly from the OST's governmental accounting system as required by the SF four twenty-five instructions. And I believe um, I did not make those attachments and the fourth, um, SF four twenty-five, but I can. And I will hand them out so that what you could see that we are following those directions. The amount reported in box ten A represents the total cumulative amount drawn down for the programs as of the reporting period ending date. This amount should generally coincide with the amounts reflected in ASAP for the same period. However, it is crucial to understand that differences can occur due to the timing of postings and potential delays in either our system, the communications between BIA and the OST, or the ASAP system. These discrepancies are routinely reconciled to our annual audit process, the program period, closeout procedures, and ultimately the single audit process as mandated by two CFR part two hundred, subpart F. Our primary concern is that the awarding official seems to be requiring an approval of the SF four twenty-fives based on a perfect match between our accounting system and the ASAP at the time of submission. We respectfully disagree with this interpretation. We firmly believe and assert that the SF four twenty-five must be based on information for our tribe's accounting system. The process for eventual agreement between financial systems involves reconciliation during closeout audit procedures. Therefore, we formally request immediate acceptance of our four twenty-fives. The, the delay in acceptance is hindering our ability to efficiently manage these critical programs and move forward with services and planned activities. It is, it is essential to distinguish between acceptance and approval of SF four twenty-fives. To our understanding, no statutory or regulatory requirement grants the awarding official authority to approve the SF four twenty-five. The BIA is responsible for monitoring compliance with federal regulations, but should not impose new requirements. The SF four twenty-five reports are intended to be accepted, reviewed for reasonableness, and used for monitoring and reconciliation. The following are some references re- supporting the tribe's position that the SF four twenty-five report should be accepted, subject to reconciliation, and do not require approval. And then these are just straight out of the CFRs. Two CFR part two hundred. Uniform Administrative Requirements, Cost Principles, and Audit Requirements for Federal Awards. This regulation outlines the requirements for financial reporting. While it mandates the submission of the SF four twenty-five, it does not specify a formal approval process. Instead, instead, it emphasizes the need for accurate, I want to point that out, for accurate and timely reporting, which we are providing based on our accounting system. The regulations focus on monitoring and reconciliation, not pre-approval. Currently, the awarding official, I'll use an example, this month of September, this past month, we got our award letters. She wants us to use those as though we received it. So on paper, we might not get them till this government shutdown is over. We might not get them till February, March. But she wants to go back and put it in there in September thirtieth and report it then. That's fraud, that's a lie. I won't do that and I won't ask the accountants to lie about when we receive the money. If it comes in February, that's what's gonna be in our counting system and all the other programs are accepting it. If we're negative, we're negative, but it's the truth. Okay, continuing with the letter. SF four twenty-five instructions, and I have that. The OMB provided instructions for completing the SF four twenty-five do not mention an approval process by the awarding agency. Office of Management and Budget, OMB circulars and memorandum. These resources provide guidance on federal grant management. A review of relevant OMB documents reveals no mandate for the awarding agency to approve the SF four twenty-five formally. Instead, they highlight the importance of internal controls, accurate record-keeping, and reconciliation processes. Specifically consider the following implications from two- Specifically consider the following implications from 2 CFR Part 200. 200.302 Financial Management. This section discusses the grantee's responsibility for financial management systems, including accurate and current financial reporting. Our tribal accounting system is designed to meet these requirements. 200.303 Internal Controls. This section emphasizes the importance of internal controls to ensure proper stewardship of federal funds. Our internal controls are designed to identify and reconcile any discrepancies between our accounting and the ASAP system during the fiscal year-end closeout and audit process. 200.3508 The Audit Follow-Up. Management is responsible for resolving audit findings. We are committed to providing accurate and timely financial reports. We believe that our current reporting process, based on our governmental accounting system, and reconciled in accordance with established procedures, meets the requirements of 2 CFR Part 200. We request that you accept our SF 425 submissions and refrain, refrain from, um, refrain from imposing an approval requirement that is not supported by regulation or statute. By doing so, we'll put the accuracy of audits in question and will make our reconciliation process impossible if we are forced to adopt amounts not supported in our accounting system. Does anybody have any questions on that or any, anything?
Question, Councilman Jumping Eagle.
I do, um, thank you, Tony, for that. So the person in question who is the awarding person over there, who is it?
Is she, excuse? Um, currently, and I got clarification from the president's office. Um, Andrea Wan is the region. And Tina Merdanian was the self-determination specialist, but she has, her title, she's signing her letters as the awarding official. She's the junior awarding official.
So she has that authority to release them funds? I mean, the...
She's the one who is requesting the approval and changing the federal requirements.
And I don't, and you stated in your letter that it's not required.
No, I'm waiting to see. And that's why I printed it and I could kick myself for not providing it. It's not an instruction.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion, Chairman, that we approve this letter as the tribe, as the tribe, Olasu tribe, and send it over to whoever needs to go at BIA. That'd be my motion.
Yeah, you gotta remember, they have a different set of rules over there in the government.
Well, that's, that's my motion. I mean, we, you know, their, BIA is supposed to work for us. That's their main function. So, you know, you by making, you know, while they got a different set of rules, while Toni just said in her letter that, you know, they're coming up with their own regulations. So that, that's my motion. If I get a second, I do. If not, I don't.
Okay. Got a question over here? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, we are on sanction, you know? So I think there's a process that BIA has to follow too. So maybe it is, we need to get it in writing and find out if they're just making these things up on their own, what the, what it sounds like, you know? BIA is just doing what they want and they're not following the law. But we need to look at that, find out, because, you know, when we're on sanction, we better, you know, uh, address these 425s. And our tribe, we're so accurate, we should have those 425s up to date. You know, when that pandemic happened, everybody got paid, premium pay, to go in and make sure jobs, work gets done, keeps flowing. You know, people got big bucks to, to ensure our tribe continues on financially. Make sure these reports are done, these audits, everything. But that didn't happen, so this is where we're at. And I think once we find out the, the process of BIA, what they have to do to get us off sanction, then we need to find that out. So instead of accusing that they're making up all these laws, I mean, violating all these and going against the CFRs. So let's, you know, if we have to make that motion, that's fine. I think we need to get it settled.
Councilman Spotted Bear.
That was my second.
Your second? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second? Okay, so you didn't have a question? Okay. Okay. Secretary called for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
P. Frandl? Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonia Little-Hawk-Westen?
Uh.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yeah.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Greg Dillon?
Yes.
David Kelly? Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Norman Stunning Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Old Little White Man?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Sixteen yes, unanimous motion carried. Councilman Poyer?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Acting Comptroller's report.
Was that everything, Ms. Montalvo?
Chair, Chair, I had one question.
I have, oh, sorry. I was gonna answer the president. Um, I have one more thing I wanted to visit with, and that was the indirect cost rate, where the proposal is and where the audits are, then I'm done. Do I?
Hold your motion.
I'm sorry. I, I know it's, I got a lot to get back to in Pin Ridge.
Okay.
Okay, so that next page that you guys see that I have the IDC, the fiscal year, the BIA rate, so forth. I, I, um, that, you'll see that drop to the 33.3 in the FY '21. And a lot of that is referencing some of the stuff that Ms. Sears just said with, um, everybody getting the COVID pay, not working and getting COVID pay. Everyone stayed home. That was, that was that. That's why our indirect cost rate, because this council, we passed the Border Patrol. We couldn't get auditors on this reservation. We couldn't get consultants. We couldn't get anybody, you know? So those are some of the reasons that we've dropped in the indirect cost rate. We, um, are behind because BIA was also closed. But I do need to show, really explain this really good. Right now, currently, our indirect cost is, is created based on salaries and fringe. So on there, I did a little scribble there. A hundred thousand. Let's say we have salaries of a hundred thousand. And our indirect cost rate is now 33.3. So obviously, that's gonna be 33,300. So every program that we have with the, or the tribe has, will pay 33,300 excluding BIA. Excluding BIA. BIA, then, we take that 29.72, that's BIA's rate. Multiply that by the 33,300. And so we are only able to draw down 9,896.76. Now tell me, who can fully provide any type of services on that when we should be getting 33,000? BIA has us under the gun. I don't know if it's something that this administration has, you know, got with them or against them, but that's what we need. We need not only that letter of support and some of that there, but my next update will be the audit and I can, I just received an email.
President, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just have a question real quick, Tony, on the IDC.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you have to look at it another way too. For many years, our tribal programs that have been giving IDC to the tribe expect good response time with their paperwork. And sometimes they don't get that. And that's the biggest concern that I've always heard since I've been on tribal council. So let's look at it that way too. The IDC was given to the tribe for reasons. So when you're going all the way down to these two lowest IDC rates, that's because we didn't do our audits and we didn't do our 425s. That's the reason why we're down to these two IDC rates today. And it's hurting us. Yes, it is. But again, even when we were getting that 46.87% IDC rate, I was working in a program. We expect good processes. When our people are putting, turning in paperwork, they expect to get things back and a quick response time. But that's their biggest concern today. And I know you heard about that probably many times. So, you know, I'm just saying that, you know, IDC, you look at that, it's given to the tribe for reasons. But now today, we wanna look down at our two IDC rates. One that the tribe receives and one is the BIA's 29.72%. They're using that on the BIA programs that are under the BIA. So again, you know, I just wanna say that because I was a director before a couple times and I seen many times what we had to go through. And today, our, I, our directors say that to us. So again, you know, we need to learn to, uh, know that our IDC that we receive from these programs, there's a reason for it. And so I just hope that, um, we really learn from this when we catch up on our audits and our 425s, that I really hope our tribe never falls into a situation like this. Because, uh, you know, too bad, you know, COVID hit. A lot of us were on council. COVID hit, we were part of it. We tried to move things, you know, even though we were in a COVID period, the people still got paid for it. Even though they were at home on Zoom, things should have got done. And that's the reason why, you know, my colleague here is saying that. So I just wanna say that today, you know, IDC is, uh, now I just really feel bad now that we're down to these two rates. I'm just hoping we get caught up here. Thank you.
What, Treasurer?
I, I just wanted to make one clarification. I'm not sure if you understood how Toni explained it. Our IDC rate is 33%. So because of the sanction, we get 29% of that 33%. So we get a third of a third. So normally, if we were to get 30,000 off of a program, we now get 10. So we have to do the same work with a third of the amount that we were being given before. And, and that's one of the biggest reasons why everybody in FAO and, and everybody under IDC took that cut down to 64 hours. Because we get one-third of what we should be getting from BIA. And it comes out to a lot of money because BIA is our largest grant. They're, they're our largest funding agency. So I, I think she just wanted you to understand that we're working with a smaller piece of the pie than we've ever had to. And these employees are doing all the catch-up work right now, more than they've ever had to. They've never had the responsibilities they have now. Never. There was an accountant in there who didn't allow them to do 425s. He didn't allow them to do reporting. And himself. And now, now that we've got all of our accountants current on the laws and the reporting requirements, and they're doing more work than they've ever had to do, BIA sanctions us and gives us one-third of the money that they should be giving us. So I, I think that just needed to be clarified and that's what the point that Toni wanted to make. We're working with less than we've ever had to. With the same amount of employees, with the same amount of work. Or no, or more work because we have to finish all of these audits. So she just wanted you guys to understand that.
Councilman Standing Soldier. Whenever meeting turns into a history lesson about what we did or what we shouldn't have did, done, and it always seems to cause a deflection of what the real issue is at hand. You know, when we start taking up for the BIA, for them not doing what they're supposed to be doing, that gets kind of sad. We're a tribe. The BIA was put in place to negotiate treaties with us and they've done a very terrible job. The BIA is notorious for one thing, that's opening that door and kicking us out into the cold while patting us on the backs and you guys are good little Indians. Well, the BIA needs to stand up and do what they were intended to. That's negotiate treaties, but they also gotta make sure we get our fair portion of it. Why we're sitting here taking up for the BIA, I don't know. And then they hire our own to play against us? And anybody that can tell me a different story than that, maybe should work for the BIA. Thank you. Okay. Uh, go ahead and finish your report, Tony. Can you use your mic, please?
Sorry. Okay, I appreciate each and every one of the accountants because what Cora alluded to was, we were there, but we didn't have a voice. We had to do what we were told. And this council knows that because they hired the accounting supervisor. But I thank them and, and I know that, that their job is hard and, and they're getting it done. And I thank you for the support for that. And I also thank you for the support, Sonia, on the internal controls because there, that's been a finding in our, in our, um, audits. And so now I've turned down directors that come the day before a meeting. That's an internal control. So when someone comes to this council and I then have the council call me and say, approve this, that's an internal control. Thank you because I have your support. And then the, I just got an email from, um, Brian Anderson at Whifley. That was this morning. He has gotten everything from Baker Tilly. I'm thinking within three, three weeks, everything. I was hoping to have it by Friday. Last Friday, he sent me a bunch of, um, testing that needed to be pulled. So I'm hoping within three weeks, he can take a good guesstimate and say, we will be done with our 22 audit. And I wanna thank those accountants and all the people in records and travel and, and property and our IT people. I wanna thank each and every one of them, that contracts. They work hard and they never get the thank yous. Um, I don't know. Was there one more thing I said I was gonna update? Was the audits, indirect cost? I think that was it. Does anyone have questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, God. Oh, wait, we've got one question here. Go ahead, Councilman Kirling.
You know, uh, just looking back on all the paperwork that we've, uh, agreed to, we did agree with the BIA that we would come in and compliance. And I, I do have that for the record. But with that being said, you know, uh, I'm not gonna blame anybody, your accountants, but we all knew this was an issue. And it's been an issue for quite some time. And for you and, and the treasurer to say they didn't have any control over the, the payroll supervisor or accountant supervisor, I think that is BS, truthfully. You could have let the comptroller know at any time these were issues. And, and this is where we're at right now. But with that being said, you know, and I've asked your predecessor on, on a couple occasions, looking at the treasurer's report and seeing the deficits in some areas, what, what is our contingency plan going to be right now for our finances? We're into minus in the general fund, from what I see? Do, do, do we retract all extra duty contracts and all contracts to try to cost save? Should we reduce work hours even further? They, these are, you know, things that we're kinda chored with to try to figure out. And I know you're stepping into a different, different area. And I hate to push this stuff on you, but you gave us an update as to where we were at and your argument was against... you gave us an update as to where we were at, and your argument was against the BIA. You know, I, I, I don't necessarily agree with some of the stuff that they put out, but I do think at some point, we signed a contract with these folks on every six thirty-eight contract, saying we would abide by this, we'd abide by that, four twenty-fives being one of them. So the fault can't completely lie on them, we have to say, take some responsibility also. And I understand your letter, I've read it. With that being said, you know, uh, I, I do have one question for you. You know, uh, what about individual restricted accounts for every single program? I think that would be an avid way of keeping the internal controls a lot better. We would know whether a program is running in the red, ex potentially. If miscoding happens, it's not, wouldn't be the director's fault, it'd be the accountants. Because each restricted account would be identified a little bit better. Not all the money will jump into the Fed one account or the Fed two account, it'll be individualized, and I think we could break down to indirect costs a little bit better. Supplies, materials, man hours, stuff like that could be better identified, and we would be getting more indirect costs if we did that. There are a few things that we can't, there's probably about four or five items that we can't charge indirect cost on, but the rest we can. So in the long run, I think it'd be a better system, and, and, you know, I just wanted to make you aware of it. You're probably well aware of it, but I'm just looking at another avenue to make us a little bit more compliant and open. So I just wanted to say that, say that, thank you, Tony.
Yes.
Real, real fast, Dave. Is that what you mean on the indirect cost rate there, the fixed carry forward? I thought that's, I believe how the indirect cost rate will be moving, so I did agree with you on that. Um, again, I know I shared information back in history with probably everybody on here, and I had no control. And, and that's history, we're moving forward. And I agree with the four, with what you said about four twenty-fives. We are responsible, ultimately, we didn't get them in, for whatever reason. They, they weren't in, but we cannot move forward, which is what this letter will hopefully help us do. Because I don't wanna get them done and then say, "Hey, the next auditors come in and say, 'Hey, these weren't done right, these weren't done as required.'" That's my biggest fear, then we're back to square one. But thank you, anybody else?
Thank you.
I'll just be brief, you know, um, I know, um, they threw out the word "general fund," so I'm hoping we're gonna get a good report from our treasurer here soon, but to, to put anything on you as the person that is in charge of balancing the book, it's like having a checkbook at home. I have six hundred and twenty-four dollars in there, and people are coming in here and they're giving you this check that they sent to the bank, and it's now pretty soon you're out of money, and pretty soon you're, and you told people in a circle that there is no money. But yeah, what happens is they say, "Nope, find money." It's not that easy just to do that, you can't just say that. So if it falls, if it falls to where, I hate to hear what, you know, Dave mentioned something, "We have to start laying more people off." If we do that, that's on us now. Because you and other people have told our finance committee there is no money. But yet we'll approve ten thousand, twelve thousand, boom, boom, boom. Money's flowing out the door, the checkbook is in the minus already. If people have to be laid off, I'm gonna be pretty upset about that, because we talked about this over and over before. You don't spend money you don't have. And I think that's kinda where general fund has been kinda floating towards more and more. Thank you.
Councilman Little-Hawk Weston.
Thank you, President. And I just wanna say in closing, you know, my last comment on, for Ms. Montalvo is, uh, you know, I think that we knew way back that we were running in a direction to where we're gonna be where we're at today. I do wanna say that as one of the tribal leaders that been here for a while. And I think that, you know, when I look back at it, you know, we as council have to take responsibility every time that contract came through on that former, uh, contractor that was saying, "No, I'll do the four twenty-fives. Your accountants won't do them, I'll do them." You know, every single time that contract was approved by finance committee and council. Looking back at it, because I did dig up some, uh, past treasurer's reports from 2019, you know, we was paying that accountant about close to three hundred thousand dollars a year to do what he was doing. And today, he's in prison. I want the people to know that, the OYAT to know that. That's who we put in there. We had so much faith in him to run our tribe. And nobody, not even the past comptroller said, "No, my accountants will do the four twenty-fives." Somebody should have stepped in and said that. So you can't just blame him. He was supposed to train the accountants, and he didn't do it. So you know, there's a lot of history to what happened, and we're part of that. Can't just sit here and say that, "Oh, today, what you're saying to us is running good." And I'm hoping it does, because some of us might be back in here two years from now. We're gonna wanna see progress. So he was getting good pay to train the accountants to do the four twenty-fives, and he didn't do it. But that's how much we must have had faith in him to carry on as a, a supposedly a CPA. So today, I just wanna mention that. And so, you know, where we're at today, and we need to move on. We put our acting in there, and I think our finance committee will be addressing those issues at our working session. So we will look at a lot of things. We will probably make some changes. So we can have better internal controls, not only over what you just said, Tony, but we have others that say we put in our requests and it doesn't get done for about two weeks. So let's look at that, too. So I'm just gonna say that, but give a little history on what happened, that's why no longer, he's here. So a lot of the responsibility falls back on our comptroller and the treasurer. Thank you.
Councilman Spada Bear.
Um, so I was reading your letter, and I wanted, you know, I was going through your letter and I was looking through the different areas under the CFR, but also under the Indian Affairs Manual, under Office of Budget and Performance Management, be, and, and the areas that you identified in your letter. And I wanna thank you for doing your research, uh, Tony, in regards to writing this letter. Because in here, the approving authority is the, the OMBF or the OMB. And so the BIA sticking, um, additional levels in there and putting additional criterias in there. You know, I'd like to see where that's stated in there, because the links in here don't seem to work, so I can't dig any further to see where, you know, what the additional steps are that they put in place for us to follow. Uh, and I'd like to see that in writing where BIA or Indian Affairs added additional, uh, steps for us to follow. So I appreciate, so I appreciate, appreciate your effort in that. And I'd like to second Dave's motion in approving the comptroller. Can we make sure we check on him? That's my second.
Okay, um, at this time, we're just gonna, we're gonna, got a situation, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll resume in five minutes.